Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for being here. I'm glad that we have all of our board members in attendance. This is the regular meeting for the month of June. Board members, you have before you an agenda, proposed agenda for the night. Open to any suggestions for additions, or we can approve this agenda.
Motion to approve?
And a motion? And a second is a discussion. All in favor say aye. Do you want to oppose, say no? All right, thank you. That done, we will please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And board members, our first item on the agenda tonight is considering the extension of our director of schools contract. Emailed that out to you. Of course, we had a great results from the annual evaluation. Did all of that last month. And what I've done, if you had a chance to look through the proposed draft for tonight, basically updated the dates to add one year on to this contract so that, because we're limited to four years is the maximum length of term for a superintendent's contract. So I've adjusted those dates accordingly, and I've adjusted the salary in accordance with the raise that we provided all the licensed employees last month. And so those are literally the only two changes, is just to bring it up to the current dates in the date range and have the salary be correct. So I didn't hear from anyone after, but no other adjustments were made, even on the allocation for other expenses and whatnot. Those all remain the same. Finance committee has met with Mr. Jones, and we were all fine with it as it is realized. So any discussion of that. Otherwise, I'll make a motion that we approve this draft contract as the new employment contract. And a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments, questions? All right, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no? Fantastic, then we're good through June 30th of 2028. That's correct. We'll sign that after the meeting. Thank you, board, and thank you for your continued service. We appreciate it. It's my pleasure. We had, in one of the emails from Ms. Williams, we had the minutes from the April 8th board meeting. We can approve at this time, or?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. And the agenda says April 8th. I'm guessing that was May 6th is what we're really talking about. Is, okay, so the last board meeting, that's all that really matters. So the minutes that were included were in fact the May 6th minutes. So the board be open for a motion that we approve those.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Got a motion? And a second? So is that a second or a last?
Or both.
Okay. Or both. Any comments or changes for the minutes from the May board meeting? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no? Great. And then we also had dispersments in the email today. You can take a moment if you need to to review before we approve those. Okay, got a motion?
Second. And also, on the agenda, it should say nay, but we know what we're looking at.
That's right, on the agenda it says April, but of course the dispersments that were sent out on May. Any discussion of, or questions about the dispersments for May? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no? Great, thank you all very much. Board members, you may recall a letter that our system received, each of us received the letter as well, and an email from the state comptroller, I guess, right, about a couple of issues with the last year's audit. So Mr. Young is here to talk to us and maybe explain it in lay terms to us so we understand what the situation is and what may need to be done.
Okay, well, first off, let me just say that, you know, the state comptroller reviews every report that goes to them, that we send, any of the, what they call the contract auditors, which, you know, they contract out all the audits of municipalities and all that, rather than doing it themselves. But they review all of our reports. And in addition, they'll review our work papers periodically, which they did last year as well. But they all, it's not uncommon for them to maybe send letters like this to point out things they find. They've got a group that that's really all they do, is read these reports and identify anything that they may question in terms of, usually it's just like this, it's more or less wording, how something's described, as opposed to actually being a problem with numbers or changing, disagreeing with how something was measured in the financial reports. But these particular things, one was, they referred to GASB 87, which I'm sure you all remember. We talked about this in '22. It's a new standard for leases that basically said all leases go on the balance sheet if they're material. And at that time, we, I discussed with you all when we met, we looked at that, and we didn't, we deemed that it was not material here because our leases, for the most part, were copy machines, that sort of thing. Didn't come as far as materiality rise to the level that we thought we needed to put them on the balance sheet. So we didn't. But we elected, we discussed actually whether we should change the wording, how we describe those leases. We felt we still needed to disclose that lease commitment. There's still a commitment out there. And so we elected to continue to describe them as we have in the past as operating leases or capital leases. And that went through just fine on the '22 audit, no comments. But this particular reviewer, again, it depends on who's reading it and how they interpret it, didn't really, he, what he said is true. This new standard does not describe, use those terms capital versus operating anymore. So, and so in light of that, I think what we will do going forward is just eliminate that. We're going to continue to report the commitment on those leases, even though we still, unless there's been something new come up, don't feel like GASB 87 is anything we really need to do here unless we get a great big lease. The one on the BCI Capital, because it's a financing lease, it goes on the balance sheet anyway. So, but going forward, what we'll do is just eliminate that wording, okay? The second thing they had was a date failed to get changed from, just carried forward from '22 to '23, and that was an oversight on our part. So, and we will correct that going forward. And again, these are, these letters come out fairly regularly. Again, if there was something serious, they'd say, we need you to reissue the report or whatever. But you missed him.
I tried to get that to them.
But they just said, you know, going forward, and which we'll make sure that happens.
So we don't need to take any action?
No action. No, it's just, next time we do our audit report, we'll consider these things and make any corrections needed.
Okay, because they approved our audit, right? It accepted it.
It's approved, it's accepted. No requirement to re-submit or do anything like that.
Thank you for explaining that.
That work? Okay. I appreciate it.
Thanks for all you do for us. Glad to do it. Really appreciate it. Okay, principals' reports. Ms. Baker?
Good evening. So at Askins right now, we're in the middle of our summer learning camp where we have rising kindergartners through rising eighth graders that are attending the program. And each day they get ELA, math, PE enrichment stream. They get breakfast and lunch and snacks, and it's just a fun time. The administrators for the summer camp are Heather Bradley and Lori Frame, and they've done a great job at organizing and preparing everything. It's been running very smoothly. We're in our third week, and we have one more week. It ends on the 21st, and they have the big water day that we've done every year planned for that day for the kiddos. Also, I would like to give a shout out to our custodians at Askins because they're working very hard right now at getting our floors waxed, cleaned, just getting the school ready for August when the kids come back. I appreciate them.
Do any of them have experienced new floors in the summer?
One, one has.
I was wondering, because we've got a bit of turnover and change outs in our custodial staff over there, and that's a daunting task.
It is, it's a big task.
It's great to hear you saying good things about that.
Yes, they're working hard, very hard.
Good.
Super. How many students are in the summer learning?
About, I think 175-ish ended up showing up, so. Yeah, it's a big group.
So that really should do some great academic good.
Absolutely. They all have to take a little post-test on the last week, and so we can kind of see their growths from the end of the year.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. McCormick?
All right. Don't really have a lot tonight. Things going in the summer, Lee is working his tail off to get the floors waxed as well. And they always do an amazing job. We also had the new concrete vehicle barriers that got installed last week. That was something Ms. Carla had worked on. Right there, when you pull up to the front of FMS, you almost don't notice them because they, the covers they put on them are kind of brown, like the same color as the posts, so you really wouldn't know they were there. But we now have those, which that keeps obviously anybody from running right up into the building, so. But that's pretty much it. We're in transition with Coach Murdock and Mr. West. Still trying to hammer out some personnel issues, but I think we made some traction on that today, so I think we're in good shape.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Baron?
It's been kind of nice and slow so far for June. I think that last month, if any of you were around the high school, you know, especially with graduation, we were wide open. So we've just been working on our master schedule for next year. We feel pretty good. We think we've got that ironed out. When you guys come see us next August, the office will have a little bit of a facelift. We're having a paint party, as the ladies are saying. We're painting all the offices, the front office, everything up there. We're just taking care of that. Ms. April and Ms. Frances, our custodians, have done a tremendous job. They work hard trying to get everything clean and ready for a new year. And we also have our summer athletics that have started as well. So they, they do a great job because they coordinate with the coaches, they coordinate with us, the teachers. I mean, they really do a great job of getting our building prepared, knowing we still have people in the building during the summer. So I can't say enough about the work they do. So that's, that's all I've got for tonight.
And your name appears twice on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
You're welcome to stay around for the fireworks and the excitement. Should you choose to leave before then, please accept our apology.
Yes, sir.
Oversight. And your patience with us. We're going to take care of that little item tonight and move on.
I appreciate you all.
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Our next section on the agenda is for public comment. For anyone who has registered in advance their intention or desire to speak to the board. I don't see any names, so I assume.
They're lined up outside.
So we don't have anyone who is appearing before the board. Okay. All right, then supervisors' reports. We can, there are no names listed, so you can flip a coin.
Tricia, she has nothing, so I guess she's here for my moral support. So I wanted to make you aware of a couple of things as we talked about before moving into Phase Two of the Innovative Schools Model Grant. So in moving into that, we're going to do some transitioning in the middle school. We will be offering, eighth graders will be taking CTE classes next year. That's going to be part of their elective, as opposed to kind of a traditional deal of guidance periods, library periods. They'll still get those opportunities, but the core instructional piece will be supplemented with being part of a career and technical education course, band, those type things. So they're going to, there'll be that linkage created at high school. The other piece of that will be a seventh grade career exploration course, which is also going to include the six weeks required of computer science training. We have hired the instructor for that, who will also be teaching a high school media class, and that is going to be Ms. Bridget Smith. So Ms. Smith meets the criterion under the occupational licensure because she has experience in that. So that piece will also include a high school morning show that will be like the one that is at the middle school in Ralph Askins. So the intent is that that will be in place within the first 30 days of school. So the other exciting news is, and we're buying all of the equipment, all of that, to kind of get that really rolling in a big way, we hope, by the end of the school year. Criminal justice, we did some assessment of our enrollments. We have hired Mr. Drew Ivy, who will be the new criminal justice instructor. So he's very excited, we're very excited. He's got a lot of ambitious ideas and goals, and we know that those are two individuals that have been very successful members of the Federal City Schools family. They do good work, and they have a passion for the things that occur in their schools and in the system. So those are our two big steps that we're making right now. So do you guys have any questions for me or about any of those things? Closing out grants, which Elise is very happy about.
It does feel good when you sort of grow your own in the system, right? You can't always do that, and maybe it's not always what you want to do, but boy, these really feel good, I think, having seen them work.
Well, you get a known quantity that you know is going to be beneficial to be a part of the family and taking care of the young people.
That's awesome.
You can't beat that.
And we hate to lose Mr. Ivy on the city police side, but what I credit he is to y'all, he's been so good at that school. So I'm proud he's taken that position, so.
We appreciate the cooperation and the good relationship the two entities have. It's undecided, but from my understanding, the process has started, and there's some really good candidates. I don't want to, I don't want to say anything at this point from what I've heard because it's not confirmed. I'd hate to get it wrong. But yeah, well, there's some exciting possibilities about that.
He set a high bar.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's all great, then. Ms. Jean, you don't have anything for the group?
No. If you have something for me, maybe.
All right. Ms. Williams?
The only thing I have is the values, revenue, and expenditure reports, and this is just for your review and if you have any questions. I would just like to answer.
Any questions on those expenditure and revenue reports? All right. Our committee reports, facilities and transportation.
So I'll start with facilities. We've had a couple of, you know, Murphy's Law incidents. We had a big leak at Ralph Askins, one of the two-inch pipe, copper pipes that supplies the oldest part of the building with water. It was in the walls, kind of pretty far back, and we didn't know about it until FTU notified us because it was leaking, kind of building up between the walls and then going out to, straight into a little ditch and drain. So it didn't show up in the building at all. But we are, if you, next month, if you look at our utility bill, that water, that water may kick up quite a bit because we were running a lot. Jeff scuba dived back into the wall and has it patched. We have a plan. It'll be, you know, the fix will be around $1,000. But it's really tricky because to get to it, we're having to cut out large sections of old metal pipe just to be able to get to where the space is, and we'll have to re, we have to cut things out to patch it, make it work, and then we'll have to replumb it as we come back through. That takes a lot of time, and versus, you know, when you've got three people on a crew, it's, you can have the best plans in the world, but plumbing leaks and things happen. We've had pretty good luck with our school buses. They're running well. I'm pleased with the way the routes are going with summer school. We've got, you know, had a couple of other small things that have had to be repaired that have taken quite a bit of time. On our projects, we've got two different groups who will be supplying us with plans for the front of Askins. It's going slow, but it is going. We've had communication with both of those in the last week. We'll provide those to y'all as soon as we get them. The roof at the middle school, we got an engineer who's come out. He's, he's given us a couple of different assessments, all of which are incredibly higher than we have budgeted. So we're trying to give him an idea of what we think we could spend to see if there are other alternatives. Because, you know, we're talking about a, it's just a matter of where the roof meets into that, from the new part of the building to the old part of the building. He's going to try to reassess and see if he can come up with some other ideas. Because I think the first assessment was like, hey, let's just rip this roof off and start over, kind of thinking we're not, that's not reasonable. That being said, though, he is still working on it. He does think he'll be able to get us something that's pretty close to our budget, which we'll go ahead and take advantage of. We are getting near to the process of trying to pull the portables out. That's being delayed by these other incidents that are coming up. We're talking with some local people that provide other services about their willingness to try to help us in that endeavor. So hopefully that'll be happening, you know, this summer. It could go into the fall, depending on how much Murphy's Law applies, but we're making some progress on that. I did want to bring up the dome. There was a meeting every month or a couple months. AMA, local AMA has a meeting with a lot of interested stakeholders locally. I was not able to attend the last one, but in the last one, members from TMA came and did speak about our project. The quick edit of the meeting was that they acknowledged that there's been a bit of a backlog. They're excited about our project. It'll be the first of its kind, and they think it'll set a bar for Tennessee. And they're very interested in trying to do everything they can to expedite the process, but there is a backlog. And so that's, that's kind of where that is, and that's about the most information I can give you all. They committed it in public here locally in, you know, a group of a lot of people. So that is still the case. They did not give a timeline. So I just want to let you all know that's where the project is. And we work on it, you know, if not every week, every other week, there's work being done on it, so. It's in the process. Transportation, the buses are, we're still having a little bit of a problem getting some parts for '09, but everything else is rolling. And we've got three buses rolling every day, morning and afternoon. They're not full because, but we have to cover the entire city, which, you know, you don't think of us as a large city, but when you're going potentially to every street and every road, that's a lot of miles being covered for three buses. So they're getting started early and getting it done. Seems to be going very well. But that's pretty much been kind of my report.
And then after another week or so, they'll be getting a break?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they'll get a break. They'll get a little downtime in July.
Good, okay. Thanks for that.
Yes, sir.
In finance committee, we had just two things. There is a FY '24 general purpose line item amendment number five. The root of the reason for this amendment is to create a separate line for the TISA funding. It's always been called the basic education program, and that's where we originally put this, these revenues. We created a new line in the, in our budget to reflect it. It's actually TISA is the program these days. It's just kind of an administrative thing as much as anything else. There's also some funds there, a slight, a very small, that relate to the summer learning camp. And then I guess we, on the interest, principal and interest on our bonds, we just are moving that to a different line, that payment to a different line. So no, it's really all just administrative here and moving things around. No new revenue, no new expenditures, just our accounting for those. So I'd make a motion that we approve line item amendment number five.
Sir.
You have a second? Any questions about? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no? All right, and you also have before you capital budget amendment number two. So last month, we approved a line item amendment, but in truth, above further review, we were actually doing more than in a line because we were going from the 72,000 line to the 76,000 line. And so technically, that's a budget amendment, since they're not in the same lines. So we really need this to be a budget amendment. And they'll have to also go for city approval. Again, no, no new revenue, no new expenditures, but just cleaning up that. But it does need to go to the city for approval to, to make sure the budget accurately reflects things. So I'd make a motion, we approve capital budget amendment number two.
Agreed.
All right, and I got a second. Any questions about that? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no? Thank you. Insurance and policy? Nothing tonight, all right. Mr. Jones?
Okay. For my report, I would like to request the board to grant tenure for Spencer Perrin, who has been with us for quite a number of years, and is potentially the only person to make principal before they make tenure. So I would very much like to recommend that.
Slight error of the system. I will gladly make a motion that we approve Spencer's tenure.
Second.
Thank you for that second. And we apologize to him already for that little administrative oversight. All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no? Thank you.
I would also like to ask the board, if you would, please approve an overnight trip to TSU for the FMS volleyball team. They have, they have requested this in the past. It's coming up July 22nd, 23rd, and they will spend one night on campus, I believe.
Sounds good.
Done, bud.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say no? Great.
And to conclude my report, I would like to say how pleased I've been with the summer program. I'm amazed at how clean and nice and well organized and quiet, really. Summer programs are not, no, there's a lot of fun happening, but in between, you know, a lot of times if you take students and boom, in a situation where there's structure and then there's fun time and there's structure, it's hard to get the quiet going. They're doing a fantastic job. The educators that are over there working on that program are, they're killing it. They're doing wonderful work, and I couldn't be more pleased. So I wanted to commend them and let you all know how proud we all need to be of that program. It's really good. And 170-plus students is substantial, meaningful, something. But that's the, that's the bulk of my report, but I would have to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Evidently not.
Correct.
All right. The only thing I have tonight is to note that our next board meeting would be July 1st, which is the week of 4th of July. And there have been some requests to not have a board meeting that week. So would it be possible to meet on Tuesday, July 9th, at 5:00 p.m.? Would that work for the majority of the board? Okay, I'm seeing enough heads that I think that's going to be a quorum easily. Well, then we will have our regular July board meeting on July 9th to 5:00 p.m. and make public aware of that as well, since that's a change. The only other date I would mention is August 1st. You know, we've always done our kind of cookout for the, for everyone with the system. The new schedules are out, of course, for the '24, '25 school year. The new schedules are out, of course, for the '24, '25 school year. I guess the first day of school will officially be the 5th of August, but when you back that up, we're, we're not going to have school or in-service on the Friday before, right? And so Mr. Jones, I feel like probably the best day for the cookout would be on August 1st, on that Thursday at lunch, if that works. We'll work out the details later, but just as a mark your calendar, I know how much everybody enjoys that time to be together with everyone. Anything, Mr. Alder, from the city board?
Everything fairly quiet. So it's working on sidewalk and issue nothing but it's a sidewalk a little slower than we wanted, but I think we've learned a lot in the first phase that everything will speed up as we go.
Okay.
That's all I got.
And y'all are attacking the final approval of the budget?
Yes.
Soon?
Right.
Super. All right. Board members, any final comments? If not, we will stand in German. Thank you.